Hey, welcome back everybody. It's that time again. Time to kick back. Maybe light up a cigar and let's, let's live the rad life. As we follow our resident raconteur, our county storyteller, our bon vivant, our man about town. Who this week and last week has taken on the task of talking to politicians. What the heck is this? We're usually talking to fun, party, cool things, and now you're talking to people who are in political parties? That's a
Yeah, it's, it's
Different kind of party.
It's the most recent form of national entertainment. I mean, buy a ticket and get a, get a tub of popcorn. Seriously, right?
Anything I can do to help.
Oh, you're such a giver, you know, Russ. Uh, but Paul, you know, I, I felt a little tinge of sarcasm in the way you introduced me today.
Little sarcasm?
Yeah, you know, the little cigar thing was maybe a little
A little over the top, okay.
Maybe. You're not, you're not making, you know, sort of slides against me because I dare to go to an Eagles show at the Sphere in Vegas.
Yes, yes, yes. The rad life. He calls me up and he says, oh, I can't do the show. We're gonna do something on Friday. Yeah, my friends are flying in from the Middle East and we're gonna go to see the Eagles at the Sphere. I said, that's the rad life, of course.
So just, just to kind of close the loop on that one, these are buddies of mine from high school that I've known for 45 years. Who we got introduced to certain music, Eagles, Billy Joel, people like that. Yes, I'm aging myself, I understand.
Yeah.
Because one of my friends, Louis, his brother came back from University of Illinois in Champaign. And Carbondale, Champaign, I think Illinois maybe it was, or Carbondale. Islam's gonna kill me. I got it wrong. But in any case, he brought back LPs. LPs, people. These are the vinyls that basically came in sleeves. You know, the ones that you're buying today, but they're pre, the ones you're buying, be careful if they're cut from digital masters. These were not digital masters, this is the actual prints. And some of them were the Eagles. And so that's how we got introduced to the Eagles 45 years ago.
I still have Hotel California.
I do too. I, I have my vinyls. I still have my vinyls and
I have Desperado, the first album.
Oh, you do? You know, you're just, you're just, you know, you're just a show off. Honestly, you're seriously a show off. But so, so
How an early doctor.
So they came, one of them came from Dubai. And the other one came from Saudi Arabia where he happens to be running a consultancy business right now. And, but another buddy of mine who lives in Mary Del Rey, and we all went to Vegas to see the Eagles at the Sphere. And supposedly the Eagles said, this is the, like, the last, this is the farewell tour.
Right.
Well, last time I saw the Eagles, it was at the Forum after the Hell freezes over tour.
Yeah, right.
You know, so, so, and then I started reading and the Eagles have now, and for anybody who's interested, first and foremost, do not miss the show, man. If you are a fan, do not miss this show, you know. Set aside the, the, you know, the money for the electrical bill and, and, you know, whatever it is. Don't eat for two weeks or whatever. Get yourself a ticket and get it in advance because they sold, they sell out. But here's the interesting thing, they've already extended the original stay duration five times and now they're gonna be there until March. And there was something about that, we'll just keep appearing as long as people keep showing up.
Cause some of these bands, Hall and Oates, don't even talk anymore. They're suing each other. And I thought the Eagles were in that, so it was Hell freezes over.
No, 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 no.
Didn't like each other for a long time.
Well, I think they all kind of did their own individual, you know, person, like, what do they call it? Like solo kind of tour a little bit? Uh, and then, I remember when I saw them at, at the Forum, when the Forum had just reopened. It was so cool. They had a record and a, a personalization of like an LP on the top of the Forum. Anybody familiar with Forum, it's around the roof on that thing. So for only people seeing it were the planes landing in, you know, in LAX. But, um, at that point Glenn Fry was still alive and was playing with them, which was an awesome treat. This time around, his son, Deacon is playing with them. And he, man, from the side, he looks like his dad, totally looks like his dad. Great artist, great guitar and singer. And I think honestly, my read was that he kind of, kind of kept the glue together for all of them. Like to, to make this last kind of, and he's, and he's been playing with them since like 2017.
The story was, maybe I have it off a little bit, that when they, they fell out with each other, started fighting.
First time by the way.
And one of them said, I won't play together. Would you ever play with the Eagles? And I said, when hell freezes over. So when they finally came back, that's why they called it the Hell freezes over tour. Cause apparently hell froze over it and they got back together.
Yes, and yeah, exactly. That's exactly why they called that the Hell fears over. Because they're like, when are you gonna get together? When hell freezes over. Well, that's a sound like a great name for an album. Let's add a tour, let's do that. So, uh, Paul and Russ, before we get started with the, you know, other form of entertainment, politics.
One of them's from Detroit, you know. One of them grew up right near where I grew up.
Who, which one?
Uh, Glenn Fry, I believe.
Okay. Uh, well, what's your favorite song?
Of, of all of them?
Yes. I know, I know it's tough, but I'm gonna narrow you down.
I would say, uh, Desperado.
Desperado is your favorite song?
I know they had huge hits and whatever, but Desperado just speaks to me.
It speaks to you?
I'm a desperado.
You're a desperado. Okay. So we've, we've identified that Paul is a desperado. Russ, what's your favorite song?
It, it is Hotel California. In fact, I bought that album just for that song. And back then, you remember, you had to listen to all the rest of the album.
Yeah.
But it was Hotel California. I love the song and I love the photo on the, on the cover of the album.
I, I know the photo exactly. Right. Um, and the colors of that photo. But, okay, so I gotta ask you a question regarding Hotel California. Cause I, I really liked that song too, but I have another one that's my favorite. I'll tell you and explain to you in a minute why. But which Hotel California do you like? Which version do you like most?
Is there more than one?
The one that has the extended guitar play in the beginning or the, the original one?
So I think I only know the original.
Oh, you, you need to look up the one that has the extended Spanish guitar in the acoustical guitar in the beginning. It is awesome. I think it was released for the hell freezes over. And anybody who, who's listening, and the two of you guys out there, you know, call us in and tell us if I'm right. But, but yeah, there's a, there's an extended entry with the guitar.
Interesting.
Yeah. And then, and then I will send you the video. Cause yes, I'm not supposed to photograph in the sphere, but I did every frigging song I could do. I recorded the whole Hotel California.
What did tickets cost? How much do I have to set aside?
Uh, I think our tickets were, I want to about, I want to say about 600 bucks a ticket? Yeah, but I mean, you know, how many chances are you gonna get just to go with your, with your high school friends? That you got, all got into sort of the same music at the same time. 45 years later to see a band that probably is not gonna honestly touring much longer.
Right.
Right? I mean, it's like, this summer was actually like, almost like my college, like coming out of college summer, right? Because I saw Santana, I saw Eric Clapton, and I just saw the Eagles for the second time.
Wow.
All the big three?
Yeah. And I, I threw in a couple of Trevor Noah's in between that too.
And one of your guys literally got on a plane and flew overnight.
Oh my God. My friend Charlie was, is a nutcase. He flew into LA, okay? Arriving the day, the concert was on Saturday, arriving from, from Saudi Arabia, arriving into LA. Like at three o'clock in the afternoon or two o'clock in the afternoon, catching a flight from LA to Vegas. And arriving at the hotel within the hour of when we had to be at the stadium.
Oh my gosh.
So that's what, 15 hour flights, 16, 17 hours?
So if you guys think you're cool, my friend flew across the world to go to a concert, okay? You guys matched that one. I wouldn't do it. And I told him, I said, you're nuts. He goes, ah, well, you know, I'll just double up. I'll go to Canada. He's got, he's got some family in Toronto and do some other stuff like that. Okay. So my, I'll come clean. My favorite song is actually Take It Easy.
Take it easy?
Yeah.
Okay, I like that. Just like I like
Well, I, 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 well, yeah, I mean, I mean, I mean, I listened to all of them, right? And they all have like a little different kind of take emotionally when I, when I listen to them. But Take It Easy, I really like. And I actually can, this is gonna sound funny. I kind of use it for almost like meditation. So take it easy. Don't let your wheels drive you crazy. Every time I get on the friggin', like just hustle. And heading careening to the cliff and I'm not, and my head is down, I put that thing on and it just re-centers me.
Yeah. I can see that.
Yeah. So that, that's my, that's my story and I'm sticking to it.
15 minutes into the show, we have no idea who our guest is. You haven't introduced him yet.
Well, we understand that he likes the Eagles. So, you know, Brownie points are ready for us. So, so without further ado, thank you Paul for keeping it real. Without further ado, he's not the, he's not the new kid in town. I'll tell you that. Oh, did you see what I just did? Okay. All right. So Russ is like, what did I get myself into? So, uh, before, without further ado, in continuation of our series spotlighting candidates. Uh, that are running for, uh, office in this election cycle. Uh, I have the pleasure of having Mr. Russ Chun, who is no newbie to the game. He's been, he's been, he's been involved in local politics for a while and he's been in elected office for a while. And, uh, it gives us a real good opportunity to talk to people like Russ because it gives us the ability to have them reflect on like, what was it like? Why did they get into it to begin with? Why are they still running for it when people like Paul would never run for office? They would run away from office, right? But, and for those who don't, who have not heard me say this, I'm just saying it again very quickly. The reason why we do these series, because we usually do it once, once a, once a week. And it's been like now whoever wants to come in and if we can make that happen, we'll just, we'll fill it in, right? So we had like a week and a half, we've had 10 people on.
Wow.
Right? And it's because you guys as candidates or people that are sitting in the, in, you know, at the seats, seats in office, elected officials. When it comes to campaigning, you don't get a chance, the way the system is, is sort of not rigged, but this way is set up. You don't get a chance for the audience, the voter to actually get to know you guys. You, you, you're like a snapshot and answer to three, three critical questions or whatever it is. And now that we have some areas that are districted. It almost seems to me like we're gonna have more people running in more districts for same seats. And so now it's gonna be even harder for some, for people to basically get to know the candidates. And so now we're making a decision within whatever little finite amount of time that we have to pick one over the other. But we really don't, it's kind of like, almost like throwing a dart at the walls in some cases, or name recognition, which is like the big name of the game, right? So, um, I love having you here, Russ. Thank you for taking the time to do this. I know, I know as we get close to, you know, what are we like 14 days out or something? Um, you guys get a lot more demand on, on, on you. So why don't you take a minute for those who don't know you? You and I have known each other for about 15 years, we figured.
Yes, that's amazing.
And then we realized we were very old for knowing each other. But, uh, we're still here. Yeah. We're still banging around. So, um, why don't you take a minute and just tell people about you? And then maybe touch on like what, what originally, because you've been sitting in city council in Elisa Viejo for a while.
Yeah.
Talked about like what initially motivated you to get involved? A little bit of background about you before this, like, you know, before you ran for office.
So first of all, thank you for having me. And I'm gonna have to comment because you talk about how long I've been in office. They recently had to reshoot my portrait in City Hall. Cause when I started, my hair was black. For anyone who's watching the video, it's white now. And what ended up happening, this was a few months ago.
You and me both.
But you know, Don Barnes, our, our Orange County sheriff, was at our boys and girls club.
Yeah.
And he was looking at our portraits on the wall and he walked up and he said, my God, look at Ross's hair. And, and, um, someone else said, what, what's wrong with it? He goes, well, it used to be black. And I said, Don, I'm standing right behind you. And he goes, yeah, man, what happened to you? And so that's when I realized I did not look like my portrait anymore. So they reshot it. And I'm not thrilled with it because I now, I don't even think of myself as looking like that with white hair. But I have been around for, you know, in this office for 12 years. But, you know, I started in public service, it almost when I moved to Elisa Viejo, so 23 years ago. Um, it was, you know, my, my daughter was, uh, three and, uh, and, um, I was in Elisa Viejo. Enjoying the parks and having a good time. And, um, at that time, somebody, uh, was putting razor blades and broken glass in the tot lot sand. And, you know, I was just appalled by it. So I went to the city and I said, hey, you know, these parks are not safe. Someone needs to rake the sand. And they said, oh, those aren't our parks. That's AVCA. And I said, what's AVCA? And they said, it's Lisa Viejo Community Association. You need to talk to them. So I went to them and I said, hey, these parks, the sand is got, uh, dangerous debris in it. Can you rake them every morning? And they said, we don't have the budget for that. We can rake them once a month. And I got so worried about it. I, um, I said, okay, I'm gonna organize some people to rake the sand. There's, what are there, like three, four parks in Elisa Viejo? And they said, no, there's 21. So I started going and knocking on doors and I got parents to agree that they would take turns raking the parks at six in the morning. And then I went down to Home Depot and I asked them if they would donate the rakes. And I got everything all set up. And then they caught the person who was doing it. And it was a lady in Mission Viejo and she was distraught over losing a child. And so they caught her and it stopped, it stopped. Um, and although I did rake our park a couple of times, and first of all, it's appalling what's in the sand in, in tot lots these days. But I started, um, raking the, the sand and, and a few months later, AVCA called me and they said, hey, you're that guy with the rakes, right? And I said, yeah, that's me. And they said, well, we've got an opening on the Parks and Recreation Committee. Would you like to join it? And so I said, sure. So I got on the Parks and Rec.
I have all these rakes. What am I gonna do with them?
So, you know, I got on the Parks and Rec Committee and I really enjoyed it. And after a few years, someone said, you should run for the AVCA board. You'd be great. So I ran for the AVCA board. I was on that board for six years. And while I was on that board, some of the city council members said, hey, we're forming a, a planning commission and you'd be great on it. So they appointed me to the planning commission for four years. And after I'd been on that for four years, someone said, you should run for the city council. And so I took what used to be a typical path to public service.
Right. It sounds like it.
Yeah. And you don't see that now. You really don't.
It's definitely harder to see in certain cities. I have been to live in San Clemente. And in some cases, we tend to be a little bit, I don't wanna say we're, we're, I, I refer to San Clemente as being where we are over engaged. Okay. Because, because some things like this, like I, you and I probably know similar people. And their engagement with this that then led to more engagement at a higher office or different representation really came from that. They came from that sort of personal something that caused them to get engaged and get involved. Uh, Paul and I talk about it all the time, relevant to like senior, like people that, that basically do either, get involved either in senior care. Or in, in providing senior services through either, you know, council on aging or, or like volunteering the communities where it's like basically either veterans or seniors. Sometimes it's a personal thing. Either something like in your front yard or something in front of you, or somebody in your family, like you're saying, this lady, you know. Unfortunately had something where she lost a child. Like it's, it's usually something that activates you. Right? And I, and I think that's probably a common threat for a lot of people unless there's some sort of bigger office, higher office. It's sort of a stepping stone to something, right?
Right.
Yeah. So, so, uh, but I want to just stop for a minute, Russ. You mentioned, you talked about this like, like Elisa Viejo, and for those who don't know. Right? We had, we had Jared Mathis on here and we talked a little bit about the Molten Company and how a lot of these communities came out of this sort of the separate, the breakup of the, of the ranch, the Molten Ranch, right? For people who don't know, how long has Elisa Viejo been a, like a city?
Incorporated city?
Yeah.
So we were incorporated in, in 2001.
Right. So it's not that long ago.
No, we're the newest city in Orange County.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and, and where were you before? Like why Elisa Viejo?
So, yeah, it's a funny story. I, um, I lived in Tustin Ranch.
Yeah.
I grew up in Tustin and I lived in Tustin Ranch.
Okay.
And, um, I was coming south and I accidentally got on the toll road. And I got, I was lost. And so I pulled off of the toll road, um, on, uh, Eliso Creek. And I pulled into the first driveway and it was where Lowe's used to be, but it was before Super Kmart. And I, um, walked inside and I said, what city am I in right now? And they said, Elisa Viejo. And I said, I am, I'm trying to get to San Juan Capistrano. They gave me directions, but they were terrible directions. And I ended up in this neighborhood. And I stopped and I looked up on the street, the light pole. And it had the, all the light poles have these banners that said, um, uh, ocean breezes and award winning schools. And I called my wife and I said, I'm in this city, Elisa Viejo, and they have ocean breezes and award winning schools. And she said, that sounds great. And I said, and there's an open house right in front of me. And I went to the open house and I called her and I said, oh my gosh, this is a beautiful place. And we actually ended up buying that house. We looked at other houses, but we, and that's the house we live in right now.
How funny.
Yeah. And it was because I was lost and I got some bad directions. Um, but I, you know, I, and then I started learning more and more about the city.
Yeah.
And the fact that Elisa Viejo Community Association manages the vast majority of the parks. They own more land than the city. But I also got to know the city council. I was coming to council meetings and, uh, enjoying, understanding what government was doing. So I had this, I have this long history of learning in Elisa Viejo.
So you went, like to your point, you went through sort of a, the natural path, like you got, you, you got involved at the community level, at the grassroots level, on something that was a specific issue. Then you, you know, and in some cases it's really, you know, whether it's kid related or education related or something, right? And then you then were asked to increase your involvement and you did through that entity. Parks and Rec tends to be, or like planning or something tends to be sort of a stepping stone usually to city council in many cases. Because that's, that's, for those who don't know, that's usually a, an assigned position, isn't it? Or was it elected a position for?
It was appointed. I interviewed for it.
Yeah, yeah. Oh yeah, for sure. I've interviewed for, for some of them and never got them. So it's definitely like you go in front of the council and this is your credentials and so forth. And then, so what was the switch to city council? Was it just, hey, you've been doing this, you should think of running?
You know, a, a lot of it had to do with our first city council. So I was, uh, really involved with AVCA. In fact, there is a, um,
No, don't, don't rub that off, Paul. Damn it. No. Sorry. He held something up. Rewrite it. I'll share it with him in a minute. Go ahead. Sorry, then threw up.
So there, uh, there was a piece of property and you brought Jared Mathis up and it's related to him.
Yeah.
There was a piece of property that the county used to own. And they, um, entrusted it to the Elisa Viejo Community Association through what's called an irrevocable offer of dedication.
Okay.
An IOD. And, and we held on to it for many years, but couldn't develop it.
Okay.
So then I signed an IOD with the city of Elisa Viejo so that they could take ownership of it. That's where we built our Elisa Viejo ranch.
Oh, okay.
And, and Jared Mathis and, and, uh, the Molten family came in and donated a lot of artifacts. And so I've been involved with that ranch property for 18 years.
Got it.
And three different agencies.
Got it.
So that's how I got involved with the city. And, uh, you know, I was involved with the city council members, Carmen Cave, Cindy Adams.
Yeah.
Uh, Bill Phillips, um, uh, for different things, events I was putting on or different activities.
So how, how long you been on city council?
Uh, 12 years.
Okay.
12 years.
Uh, so I'm sorry, I gotta do this because, because I can't even believe he's doing this. Here, so, so Paul, you know, it's, it's almost like having a
Have give him notes on the side.
It's almost like having a class sometimes, right? So he's like flashes me, what is an Eliso?
Yeah. A view of what? What Elisa Viejo is a view of what?
So it's, it's about the trees, uh, uh, old alder trees in Elisa, is what that means.
Yeah.
So that's what it is. And people ask me that all the time. And I've said it so many times, sometimes I get it wrong. But that's what that is.
It's alder. It's a, it's a view of, of trees basically. Yeah.
Yes.
Are you happy now? Can we get back to the normal programming?
You said this was an educational, you're going through the history of Elisa Viejo.
I mean, you're using, you're using whiteboards.
But that's a really tiny whiteboard. And by the way, Paul just mentioned the history of Elisa Viejo. There's actually a book called The History of Elisa Viejo. It was written by a gentleman named Bob Bunyan. I'm on page 83. So if anyone wants to go get that book, it's at Barnes and Noble.
Page 83.
And there I am.
And you'll see, will they see a picture of you?
With black hair.
With a black hair.
Yes. They're updating the book at the request of our supervisor, Katrina Foley.
Yeah.
And I told Bob, thank goodness, put a picture in that looks more like me now because, uh, that's a big assumption that I'm gonna be in the book.
You're starting a problem here because if you, if all of us start changing our pictures.
I feel an obligation to.
Honest representation. Um, okay. So, so for 12 years, that's a long stretch, man. I mean, that's, that's a lot of commitment in the community. Um, what are some of the highlights from 12 years?
So the interesting thing is, you know, being on the city council, there's a whole spectrum of commitment.
Yeah.
You can just show up for two meetings a month.
Yeah.
Or you can try and fit everything into every day possible. And I'm actually on that end of the spectrum. And that's why people always say, you seem so busy. And it's true because I'm on our city council. But I'm also, um, representing us at the county level at the, the Orange County Fire Authority. And at the, and then also on the Orange County Council of Governments. And then at the regional level, on the Southern California Association of Governments. And then at the state level, the League of California Cities. So I'm up and down the whole state. And especially in our county and especially right now with the Orange County Fire Authority, cause so much is going on. And so that's the path I've chosen along with community service. So I mentor a group of students at the high school called the Elisa Viejo Youth Council. I also have an intern from Soca University. I work with the senior communities. I teach classes on, uh, People make fun of me for this all the time. I teach ukulele classes and also classes on, you know, Hawaiian cooking.
No, put away your ukulele.
And he plays the Eagles during those ukulele classes. That's all tied together.
If you unlistens to Hotel California with, by Russ.
I try and fit everything in. And I'll say this, um, years ago, I used to work for the American Red Cross. And it was during COVID and it was during a lot of disasters and a lot of people from the Red Cross were just so stressed out, they were dropping out of the workforce. So they hired, uh, counselors for everybody. And, um, they, 10 one-hour sessions and I went through the counseling to make sure I was okay. And at the end of my sessions, the counselor said, okay, so I've got some recommendations for you. And I said, okay. And she said, you need to learn how to say no, because you say yes to everything and then you, you agonize over disappointing people. And she said, also you need to continue to play your ukulele and continue to walk your dog, cause those are your only times when you can rest and, and decompress. And then finally she said, I also noticed that when you get irritated or tired, you use sarcasm as a, as a defense. And it's actually hurtful sarcasm.
You're in good company. Don't worry about it. This, this is a safe place, Russ.
So she said, so please dial back the sarcasm. And I said, of course I will. But, so yeah, that's, um, I, I do try and fit as much in as possible.
Which, which by the way, sarcasm is, is a dying art and we should revive it every chance we can. Just, that's my, you know, public service announcement.
I like that better. Cause I just heard on a sitcom, they said sarcasm is the weak mind's defense. And I was like, oh darn.
Oh, no, 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 no. There's no weak minds involved when it comes to sarcasm. Well-placed sarcasm is a, is a, is a, is thing to behold. It's a piece of art, man. No, uh, but anyway, okay. So that was a little sarcasm there, right?
Yeah.
So, um, but okay. So that's, that's really cool. And, and for those who don't know, yeah, I mean, I think, I think we all look at people running for city council and are like, oh, they're gonna be city council member. But part of the responsibilities for a lot of people that sitting, that sit on city councils is they represent the city in other capacities. Like fire department, water district, you know, whatever, right? So yeah, you guys have a bit of a full schedule if you want to take it on.
Right.
And, and so, you know, over, over 12 years, like I started asking you like, what are some, what are some of the highlights? Like if you look back at your time being on council, like what, what are some of the highlights? Because this is a new city.
Yeah.
Right? So it's like, it's not like it's been around, there's precedence, like you guys were actually developing things within the period that you've been on council.
Yeah. You know, um, one of the highlights actually was during COVID.
Okay.
And I worked with the school district to bring free meal distribution to Elisa Viejo.
Okay.
And it, it came about because I saw a young man at Christmas time with his mother, standing in the rain. And they were looking for food in a, behind a grocery store in a dumpster. And I was so appalled, I called our, our supervisor and the board of supervisors and I said, what kind of programs do we have? And they said, we've got a number of them, but it's eight 30 at night. Please don't call me after hours. But, um, I called the school district the next day and they said, we've got a free food distribution program, but we didn't think there was a need in Elisa Viejo. So I worked with them. I started a group called Feeding Elisa Viejo. And they started, they said, if we can get 14 people to accept the food, it's a successful program. And the first Tuesday that they were distributing food, 68 families showed up.
Wow.
And they said, wow, okay, there's a need. So we got through COVID with that and I was very proud of that. Um, for four years, I've been working with Age Well Senior Services.
I know them, I know them well.
Yeah. And they, they said, we've never had, uh, Meals on Wheels on Elisa Viejo. And four years.
That's shocking.
I know it is. And I went through and I talked to every corporation, all city government, all this stuff. And finally I was in the faith-based community and I talked to the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints. And they said, you can, you can host it here. We'll do the distribution. We'll bring you volunteers. And so that just started about four months ago. Meals on Wheels is brand new.
Seriously? You have not had Meals on Wheels until four months ago in Elisa Viejo?
And there's a big need. So I'm, I'm very proud of, of accomplishing that because it serves a, a population that was overlooked.
That's insane. That, that, I mean, it's insane. My, my mom back in the nineties, early 2000s was basically volunteering for Meals on Wheels through Age Well. Uh, and it may have not been Age Well at the time. I think maybe it was South County Seniors or something like that at the time. Maryland Diddy and, uh, in San Clemente. But that, that blows my mind, Russ, that, that, I mean, what is it? Is it, is it the fact that the assumption is those needs are not there?
Yes. There's a perception of, of, um, I don't know if, if the right word is opulence or affluence. But there's an assumption that there's no need for it, that, that our students aren't homeless, but we've got a homeless population of students and the seniors need the food.
Yeah.
So that's one of those things. And, and I worked with Maryland Diddy for many years.
Yeah.
Um, and, and so, um, when I got to take part in that. And then also to take part in providing scholarships. So our city was not providing scholarships for graduating seniors. And I saw a need. Um, and my wife said, you know, don't give it to the kids that are going to these Ivy League schools because they don't need that, that scholarship. Give it to the kids that have a financial need. And so 10 years ago, I started my own scholarship. And every year I, I can award it to students graduating from Elisa Miguel High School. And, and I've gotten letters from parents. I got one letter that really, uh, touched me. It was from a father and he said, um, I'm ashamed that I couldn't provide for my daughter and I want to thank you for helping her to get the saddle back because I couldn't do it. And I, you know, I sat there and I
And this is a community college. This is not like your, like your Ivy League. This is, wow.
She just wanted to get there and it was $2,500.
Wow.
And so scholarships, I've been very proud to provide scholarships and, um, and work with the students. I, um, you know, I have to say, um, the, probably the proudest moment was when we completed the, uh, the helipod and the, and the helipad. I'm sorry. Helipad, pad and helipod, um, on Wood Canyon. Cause that was a property that I was involved with 15 years ago with Savannah's Organic Ranch Organization. And they came And they came to me and they said, we want to put a ranch here and our family suffered a tragedy and we lost our daughter. We want to put it in her name. And I worked on that for eight years. But sadly the family split up and the organization just faded away. But it, you know, that property has been vacant all that time. And just, just back last October, Mike Avramides, the president of AVCA came to me and he said, you know, that property is still there. And is there something that we can do with it? And I said, this is perfect timing because we need that helipad and we need a helipod there to refill the helicopters with water. Let me bring it to the Orange County Fire Authority. And it wasn't even on the agenda. I mentioned it in director comments at the end. And the entire authority said, oh my gosh, that's exactly what we need and we have funding for it. So I got to work with the fire authority, with AVCA. And then Katrina Foley, our supervisor in the fifth district, she had some funding in the county. And then the last piece of the puzzle was Moulton-Niguel Water District. They ran the line in. That's open. It's been in service for the last month, but we're having a ribbon cutting later on this week. And that protects our city of Elise Viejo. It protects Laguna Niguel and it protects Laguna Beach.
Well, it can also, it can also act and support capacity for something like we just had with the airport fire.
Yes, exactly. And I'll tell you, we've had two evacuation level fires since, in the last five years. I was evacuated both times. And when you see people, you see your neighbors putting dog food and, and guitars and stuff in their cars and they're evacuating. You know, it's, it's a potential tragedy.
Oh, Russ, it was, it was really scary. I can't, I'm trying to remember where I was. I was not in town. I was somewhere else. I may have been, I may have been in Chicago or Wisconsin for, for relatives, cousin's wedding. But wherever I was, I'm watching this thing and you got, you got the, and when I say airport fires, not John Wayne Airport, there was, there's a, radio control, little strip, something that sort of near Casper Wilderness. And that's where that fire started. And then there was the other one that was in, in sort of near Mentone, in that valley area, like leading up off 38, leading up to Big Bear. I have property in Big Bear and I have property in San Clemente. And I'm sitting there watching this and I'm going, this is really scary, really, really scary. And then especially in a, in a highly, like not necessarily high density area, but where there is a lot of, you know, single family homes and stuff like that, that where we are in South County. Like, and, and you could see, like, if you went to the fire authority map, you could see all the planes that were actually doing the airdrop. Like the, the system is actually nuts. Like that map is amazing. Whoever put that thing together was ridiculous, as far as the information that it conveyed. But yeah, you need that kind of stuff and you need to kind of do it preventively.
Yeah. You need to be prepared. And you know, I guess the reason.
And those, and those things are not getting less.
Right.
If anything, they're getting more, climate change, whatever it may be the reasons. But yeah, and then, and then, and, and so that's pretty cool that you guys got that in.
Yeah. And that's, that's why, you know, the fire authority, we say fire season is every month of the year.
Yeah, pretty much.
And you know, a lot of people in Elise Viejo said, well, when did this take place? I didn't see it on the city council agenda. It's because it's not city property and it was never on an agenda. That's why I was so proud that I got to be sort of the central person that knew all these entities. And everybody came together to put that. And, and it's, it is, it's an incredibly valuable resource.
Yeah. We talked, we talked about this when the first, the first spotlight we did, may have been the second one, was with John Stevens, mayor of Costa Mesa.
Yeah, I know John.
Yeah. And we were talking about that. And one of the things that just popped, like was very clear for me and Paul when we were, when we were talking to John is here's a gentleman that's responsible for a city that has borders with five other communities. And we started talking and he's been there, similar to you. He's been there for a while and he kind of came at it similarly, sort of the involvement, community involved, leveling, involvement and then, and then committee and then, you know, city council. But we were talking about the importance of that institutionalized knowledge and, and the ability to reach across and connect. Because especially now as we're looking at things like homeless issues, we're talking about, you know, housing, cost of housing, affordability, workforce housing, all that stuff. In some of these cases, it's not a by-city solution.
Right.
It's a regional solution.
It has to be. Yeah.
Right? In order for it to be a sustainable situation. Otherwise we're either kicking the can down the road and ignoring it. And then we're getting, you know, basically chastised by the state. Or we're basically not looking at, at, at doing it or like, you know, just let's just bust them to somebody else and make it their problem. But I think there's a lot, I mean, from what we have experienced by doing this, because when I do these episodes too, is it, it helps me also get a sense. I think a lot of people that are running for office and have been there or running for reelection are motivated to find these regional solutions. But you need to basically not act in a silo.
Right.
Because that just dooms it from the beginning.
Exactly. And you need to be a credible source. So that's why relationships are so critical.
Important, good point.
Because you know, like I said, I called, I called our fifth district supervisor when I saw that young man and his mother in the rain. I called her at eight 30 at night and she and I are from different political parties, but she answered the phone. And she, in the very next day, she started getting staff on it and trying to find a way of, of helping. And it's important to be able to work with people and have those relationships and be viewed as a credible source. Then they take your calls and then they're looking forward to working with you.
Yeah. I'll, I'll tell you something, Russ, and, and I don't think I'm alone in this. I am sick and tired, seriously sick and tired of the sport of politics.
Yeah.
Of this sort of, I mean, forget about the fact that it's supposed to be nonpartisan at city council level. We all know the reality, right? We all know the endorsements and all that crap, right? But I'm so sick and tired of that as a voter. Okay. And I'm non-party preference. I look at issues, I look at people and I look at solutions. And if you're basically going to be fiscally irresponsible, you're going to be basically siloed in your own ego. You know, call it party over city, right? Then I'm going to have a problem with it. And, and, and honestly, the, the volume of the vitriol and sort of the negative campaigning, and I get it, it works, right? But you're also pissing off a whole bunch of people that are just going to completely not look at you if you engage in this. Like we've gone through this. We've gone through this. We played in this field. We played in the sandbox. We, we threw, you know, mud cakes at each other, whatever it is, right? And it's like, grow up already.
Yeah.
Because we were all dealing with issues, especially like right now, it's serious. Like we've got, we've got the homeless is one issue. We talk affordability of housing and everybody's like, not in my backyard on affordable housing. Okay, great. So, so the people that are born and raised in those communities, we're gonna lose them because they can't start their lives there. Because we haven't figured out a creative solution to provide them with some sort of sustainable housing. Or the seniors that are basically one medical bill away from basically being destitute or losing their nest egg of the reverse mortgage that they have to hold on to their house. Which again, is not helping with the inventory on the market because they're, they're not releasing that into the market. Like all these things require leadership, but they require leadership at a regional level.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's why it's so critically important to take the role of a city council member and look beyond the bounds of the city. And that's what I, you know, I am very proud of the fact that for the 12 years I've been on this council, I have consistently reached all the way to Sacramento to make sure that I'm representing us. And I'm going to tell you a quick story here because it just happened today.
You go ahead.
You talk about, you talk about partisanship and, and the whole circus of, of political campaigns. Last night I was at our, one of our elementary schools and one of the parents came up to me and she said, I don't know if you know this or not, but somebody knocked down all of the campaign signs on the corner of Glenwood and Eliso Creek. And I said, oh, they'll stand them back up. And she said, well, I walked over and looked and someone took those wires out of them. So you can't stand them back up.
Yeah.
So this morning I drove over there and I looked and somebody did. They stole all the wire frames and threw the signs around. So I posted it on Facebook. I said, just so everyone knows, someone has done this. So candidates, you need to put new wire in your signs. And then I thought, you know what? I've got some wire in my trunk.
Yeah.
But I'm not going to touch other people's signs.
Right.
So I took the wire frames that I had and I dropped them off at the AVCA office. And I said, this will replace everyone's.
If anybody who needs a wire frame is there here.
And I started getting these responses, don't, don't do that. People are going to think you're up to something. And I said, no, I'm giving them to everybody. My opponent, other people running for different offices, everyone got a new wire frame because I had them. And, and the concern that I was going to be viewed as playing some sort of sign game. It came from so many directions. I'm, I'm actually kind of afraid to look at my Facebook to see if people said, oh, I see what you did or something. But that's the unfortunate climate that we're in right now, where people are so distressing because so many bad things are happening. And I want to make sure that we get through this election. And when we look backwards after November 5th, we can say, I worked, I, I worked as hard as I possibly could and I ran an ethical campaign.
Well, and that's all you can do is be able to look at yourself in the mirror and know regardless of what is being labeled, what is being thrown around, whatever, right? Because here's, here's the reality. Somebody's got a problem with your, with your sign, whatever you're doing, you did with the signs or the sticks or whatever it is. Guess what? That's going to last just about as long as the next thing that they basically, basically get attention to. I think we live in a world, a world of, and this is no disrespect to anybody who's really suffers from this. We are a bunch of people that have attention deficit disorder. And we're basically a bunch of squirrels that gets distracted by shiny objects. And so today, oh, this is a sign thing. You're worried about it. It happened in the morning. By the afternoon, they're on to something else, right? And, and the sad thing about that is, is that that distraction from the things that we need to really focus on is real.
Yeah.
Right? And so next thing you know, it's four years later and we haven't really done anything. And now the problem is more compounded.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Yeah.
So let's, let's talk about this for a minute because, because you just raised something that's interesting for me, which is what we were just talking about, like being able to reach outside the city, right? And being put in a city council position where you represent the city. And now you're basically reaching out in the name of the city to Sacramento or whatever it is, right? Okay. How does that change when you're in the district? Because now all of a sudden, you're not running at large. Now you're running for a district. So take a minute and talk about how that is compared to what you've experienced in the past. How's it been? Is it any different? Maybe it's not different. Is there benefit positives, negatives? I am a newbie to the district thing. It's our first time for us in San Clemente to have districts, right? And so I'm just curious. So you're more seasoned from the other side. I'm curious what your take is on it.
So this is the way I look at it. I am now in a district, District Five, and I'm representing that district. But I'm working for the entire city.
Okay.
I can't say that we're only going to have Meals on Wheels in District Five. Just like I can't say that only kids from my district are going to get a scholarship. So I'm working for the entire city and I always have. So I look at it that way. Now, from the campaign side of things, it is strange because I've had people, it just happened to me today at Trader Joe's. But the cashier said, don't worry, I'm going to vote for you. And I said, well, that's, that's great. Do you live in my district? And she had no idea. And in fact, obviously, you know, four fifths of the people can't vote for me because they're outside my district. So that makes it very unusual. It, it happened to me at Soca University also. I was there and, and somebody in student services said, I want to vote for you. And I said, where do you live? And they told me, I said, yeah, you're not in my district. So that makes it difficult.
Soca in your district?
It's not.
Okay.
And, and that's the funny thing is for 23 years, I've been so involved with that school and with the Performing Arts Center and the students and all these things there, and they can't vote for me.
And for anybody who doesn't know what we're talking about, go check out the Soca campus. It's one of the most beautiful campuses out there. And their whole philosophy and approach to education is definitely worth something for you guys to get, to be aware of.
And their Performing Arts Center is world-class. So in fact, I just, we were talking about musical performers. I just saw Dionne Warwick there. And so incredible performances. But you know, that's what's happening with the districts. And it is strange because on the one hand, I run into so many people who say, I'd love to vote for you, but then they can't. The other hand, the district is, it's so much smaller than the entire city, the general election, that, you know, there was an issue that came up. It had, it had to do with the development project called Avalon Bay in the Lowe's Center. And people were up in arms about it, very, very upset. And some people came into our council meeting and said, I wasn't properly informed about this. You didn't tell me what was going on. And so I said, you know what I'm going to do? I'm going to start going door to door. And I started knocking, I knocked, you know, in the first week and a half, I knocked on 1,100 doors and asked people, did you know about this? And I, you know, I've actually gone to 4,000 doors now. And that's most of the voting population that I need to win. And so I could never.
How big is your district?
So everyone's district's about 10,000 voters.
Okay. And where's your, where's District Five? Like?
So it's, it's a very strange boundary because it includes half of my neighborhood.
Okay.
And then it goes down Boundary Oak and Wood Canyon and wraps around. So that's the south westerly side of the city.
Okay.
But half of my neighbors can't vote for me. In fact, half of the people on one street can't vote for me. And it's so, it's the, this districting thing is based on demographics and it's not based on geography. So it is very difficult. And a lot, one of the main problems is people don't know that we're in a district election. So they don't understand why they, they, you know.
So how do they find out? When they get their ballot, it's on there only for their district?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's how you know. Cause I've had, I can't tell you how many calls I've had where people said, I looked for you on my ballot and you're not listed.
Yeah.
That's why I'm out of your district. So that's the downside of it is confusing for the voter. The upside is if someone wants to run, they have an opportunity to cover far less of the city and get their message out.
I gotta tell you, I, I'm comparing it to our situation in San Clemente because again, like I said, I happen to be in one of, they're staggering them. But I happen to be, yeah, I happen to be in one that actually is going to be districted, right? And so there's no educational component.
No.
About the fact that we are now districted. Hey, remember, we voted on this and we're now districted. And hey, just so you're prepared when you get your ballot. You know, you know, if you don't see the name, you may not be in the district of that person you're familiar with, right?
Yeah.
It's interesting because it sounds to me like Elise Viejo is the same situation. Like there's no educational component. Maybe there should be.
There should be.
Because I'm, I'm guessing more and more cities are basically adapting, adopting this, right?
Yes. From Northern Cal to Southern Cal, cities like ours are being sued.
Yeah.
To change to districts.
Yeah.
And you know, I, I have this conversation with many, many people, but even when you say it, it's not clear until they get their ballot and go, oh, Ross isn't on the ballot. That's when they know.
People are creatures of habit. They, they, until they have to face it, they're not really, it's not really registering.
Exactly.
Right? And Mike, Mike, who, you guys are both running for the same district, I believe, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So Mike was here and he was saying the same thing, like the state basically, there was a challenge to potentially a lawsuit. And then so you, you didn't really have a choice. You needed, you needed to do this. So how, how has it been from a, from an expenditure perspective? Is it, is it more, because that was one of the things that everybody floated, oh, if we go to the district, it'll be cheaper. It'll be a little more manageable, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, in your case, it's 10,000 people in the district. I had, I had Jeff Stark here from, from Irvine. He's running near the north, in the north, in the Great Park area. And he said, like, his district is 80,000 people. I mean, it makes for a different shoe leather if you're knocking on doors, right? How's it been cost-wise compared to what you're used to when you've run before?
So I, this is an unusual campaign for me. In the past, I've, my expenditures were surprisingly low to get reelected. This time I've spent more for a smaller area.
Interesting.
Because I'm taking a different approach. The one thing that's, or two things that are remaining consistent is my engagement with the public.
Yeah.
So I'm knocking on every door. I'm calling people. And by the way, people love it. They, they answer the phone and I say, hi, this is Ross Chen. I've been your city council representative for 12 years and I'm running for reelection. And I hope to get your vote this November 5th.
Yeah.
And then they just sit there and I say hello. And they say, oh my gosh, I thought you were a robocall. I said, no, it's me. It's Ross. And they said, oh.
You know, Russ, every single person who sat in your chair and we've talked to has said the same thing. People are pleasantly surprised and happy that somebody is actually reaching out to them. And it, and it's, and it's almost shocking and sad reflection on the fact that we've gotten to the point where we are, the person who represents you is so distant and unreachable that we now have a chance to maybe reconnect with that because of the district thing. But yeah, everybody seems to be saying the same thing. When I knocked on their door, they were happy to see me. When I called them, they're like, oh my gosh, this is not like an automated, you know, robocall.
And I, you know, my position has always been that you can't lead, you can't govern from the dais. You need to be in the public.
Absolutely.
And that's why, you know, for 12 years, every month I have a coffee chat.
Yeah.
And sometimes it's just me sitting.
And you have your own podcast.
And I have my own podcast and I talk to the public. I volunteer at all the schools.
Yeah.
Because I think that's important. But I'll say this about the coffee chat. No one else will do it. Because I see, I'm, I don't get embarrassed if it's just me sitting there.
Yeah.
But sometimes it's just me, or sometimes it's 25 angry people.
Yeah.
I never know what it's going to be, but I do it every single month. And so for me to be reaching out to the public and then they say, oh, that's right. You taught my daughter's ukulele class. Or you came and made fried rice at our middle school. They know me from that. And this just happened yesterday. I was doing a, an event. And this girl came up to me, a young girl, and she said, oh my gosh, you're Evan's father. And I said, yes. And she said, you handed me my diploma three years ago. I said, I did. And so that's the stuff that I find so gratifying. When people recognize me, not because I'm wearing a Hawaiian shirt, which apparently is my uniform.
I was wondering whether I should pull out one out of my deep closet when you were going to come on today.
But it's that people, you know, people know me because I do things in the community. And that's, that's why I'm, I'm gratified to be running in this environment. Because it's not a stark contrast from what I've done before.
Okay. So do you think that, do you think, we talked about being both district focused, but also city focused and beyond, right? Do you think that part of, a big part of that, which it's, it seems it would be a natural, yes, to me, is because you've been in the other role. Like, and the reason I'm asking is, is because we, we're going to see a lot new face, more new faces that get involved in the district elections, right? And there's going to be people that are going to make a difference. That get involved in the district elections, right? And there's going to be people that are going to make a decision about new blood, old blood. Black, you know, dark hair, now you're, right? Hey, I, I, hey, listen, I'm pointing the finger at myself. But the, the, do you think that that same overall commitment? And I know some communities are more engaged that way and others are maybe more widespread, right? Do you think the, 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 that, that's a product of somebody who's been added long enough prior to districting? Do you think people's, from what you have experienced maybe, or seen from other, from people, do you think people will share that?
So I.
Overall concern for the city?
I hope so. Okay. I hope so. Because I, I've said this a, a number of times. Listen to the last ten minutes of any city council meeting over the last twelve years. I never say, it's been a quiet two weeks. I have nothing to report because I've never had a quiet two weeks. And I never say, there's this term, people say, well, I'm submitting my goings on in writing, which is code for, I haven't done anything in two weeks, but I don't want people to know it. So I'm just going to say it's going in and writing. I've never done that in, in twelve years and I've only missed one city council meeting. So I, my hope is that if I don't get reelected, the vacuum is filled with somebody Who will take those, those responsibilities on. Now, everybody has the opportunity to do that right now on our city council. But typically I stand alone. I was just in Long Beach for a three day conference and it was just me. Six months before that, I was in Palm Desert for a conference and it's just me. Um, from Eliso Viejo, representing Eliso Viejo, but anyone can go.
Okay. You, you're kind of, you're kind of opening a door for me here, Russ. So I'm going to ask the question.
Okay.
Okay. Because if you don't win.
Yes.
Do you see yourself being less engaged?
So, uh, let me see how much time we have. Okay. I've got time to answer this. I just had this conversation with somebody. So I, so every, every year.
Yeah.
I do this thing called the tour of the town where the Socha, Socha Student Affairs runs a bus, a tour bus. And a hundred students come with me and we go through the city and I tell them all about the city and then we all have lunch.
Okay.
And I also take students ice skating and I do different things like that. And I was asking this person in a leadership role. I said, if I don't get reelected, will I still have the kind of access I have to do these things for the students? And she said, Ross, you've been a friend for so long, of course you will. That's great to hear, but I don't think that's always going to be the case. I know that when I call Don Juan Middle School and I say, hey, I want to do a ukulele lesson for the kids in the special programs. They say, oh, well, it's Councilman Chan. So we know him.
Of course, of course. The seat comes with, with certain cachet and certain pull. I mean, we, we, we'd be foolish not to understand that.
Right.
I'm just, you don't strike me as somebody that is not going to find another way to be engaged.
No, in fact, I already have, so I've already joined a new board, the Eliso Viejo Community Foundation.
Okay.
And we're fundraising and we're doing things for the community.
Yeah.
So I don't want to, I don't want to plan for failure, but I also want to know that there is going to be an outlet.
I don't think it's planning for fear, for failure, Russ. I think what it is, is it's a reflection of the, the true DNA of somebody. Because I, I know from my own personal experience, like, uh, and, and, and I have the same problem. I, I think, I, I don't think I'm cured of it. But I think I basically take enough of a, you know, like self inflicted medication, maybe of saying no, no, no to myself, right? But I had the problem of saying no to things. I say yes to everything, right?
Yeah.
And part of it is just who you are. And I think, I think, you know, like every journey, it takes turns and twists and And it evolves in different ways. In some cases, we don't even know how it's going to evolve. And it's just part of the adventure and the excitement, actually. So you just strike me as somebody that would find something. So I'm not surprised by what you're telling me. Um, I, I, yeah, Paul, Paul is saying wrap it up. So, okay, that, that's, what are some of the things? I mean, other than the normal stuff that everybody's dealing with, like the homeless, the, the, the affordability of housing, cost of living. You know, the fact that in South County, we have kind of evolved past the being sort of the provincial side of the county. We're now More engaged in, you know, viable communities. What are some of the things that are maybe specific to Eliso Viejo that people may, may not know? Are either faced, that the city faces or things that you have sort of on your radar to be involved with?
So, uh, you know, I am, uh, very actively involved right, right now in saving the DMV. Um, the Department of Motor Vehicles Office in Laguna Hills. And people were surprised by that, but there was such an outpouring of concern.
Yeah, I didn't know it was in danger.
It's, it closed last Friday.
Oh.
And, um, at the very last minute, um, the owner of the shopping center contacted me. Uh, and you talk about making a, a round the world trip.
Yeah.
From South Korea.
Yeah.
And he said, can you do something? And I said, I can't, not in my city council role, but let me see if I can find someone who can.
Yeah.
And I was able to arrange, uh, a meeting with Senator Dave Min. And this property owner flew from Korea and the next day met with Dave Min and me. And they're trying to strategize on a way of reopening that DMV.
So what was the issue? Why did it close?
So.
Was it just eliminated like an unnecessary office?
It was eliminated due to the reliance, a greater reliance on technology, um, on online testing and so forth.
They shut the one down in San Clemente too, didn't they?
No, no.
Oh, no, no, no.
That's the one that they're saying people will have to go to.
Well, and, and, and do you see, did you see my eyebrows go up when he said that they closed the one in his area? Because all I could think of is, wait a minute, I can walk into San Clemente one anytime and get service.
Yes.
Now I'm going to basically have to deal with the line now.
Yes. And so I got very involved with that, you know, and, and everyone's saying, boy, this is a hail Mary. But I don't know if it's a hail Mary because the property owner is saying, I'm going to make all these financial concessions. And, and our state senator is saying, let's figure out a way to continue to serve hundreds of thousands of people. So that's something that people are surprised about, um, because, uh, you know, I, I wasn't on anybody's radar. But it, it all came together. And like I said, this gentleman.
He just reached out to you and said, hey, can?
Through a developer and he flew in from Korea.
Yeah.
And met with, uh, Dave Min. So maybe that will work. I don't know if it will or not, but that is something that's very.
Well, I'll tell you, I'll tell you, that's an interesting, that's an interesting scenario. I'm just from my, with my design hat on for a minute. That's an interesting scenario because you got technology that impacts the, 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 the need for certain square footage. Uh, there could be an opportunity here for the DMV to actually basically revise a plan to a smaller footprint. But it also means a consistent, you know, lease, excuse me, arrangement with the property owner. So that, that's part of the motivation on that side. It's a win-win. But it could be an interesting kind of like, almost like a showcase of what can be done.
Yes.
For, with a smaller footprint DMV. Um, because yeah, we don't, I mean, we don't, we don't utilize the DMV the way that we used to.
Exactly. Except the senior community.
Except the senior community.
And, and they can't be expected to drive to San Clemente or Santa Ana.
Well, isn't there, isn't there, are you talking about the one that's in Laguna Hills?
Yes, Laguna Hills. That's the one.
The one of, of, wow, really?
Yeah, and Molten. Yes. Last Friday.
Wow.
And, and so.
I did, I did design on the, uh, event spa, space, Pacific Hills.
Oh.
That's right next door to it.
Exactly.
That is a huge DMV.
And, and.
And it's right across from all the.
Laguna Woods Village and all of that. Yes. So that's again, goes to relationships. And I didn't know that I could pull a meeting together like that. And then, uh, Men's Office sent out a press release and it said, Ross Chan, Councilman, put it from Eliso Viejo, put a meeting together. And I thought, oh my gosh, I, I did.
Yeah.
So it's, it's that issue. It's the development project at the Lowe's Center, which is called Avalon Bay.
Yeah.
That so many people in the public are concerned about because they don't feel they've been informed enough.
Yeah.
So I'm involved with that. And it's the ongoing fight to make sure that we have sufficient wildfire mitigation measures.
Yeah.
And the Orange County Fire Authority's role in our region.
Yeah.
Those are, those are such critical issues for me that I want to make sure that I put all of my attention to them. And, and I can make sure that public service, uh, public safety is addressed. And that our senior communities are, are provided for, our, our, our youth and our education, uh, is, is, is consistently supported. You know, all of these things are very important to me.
Yeah, you may not be using the rakes that you started off with, man, but I think the motivation is the same.
Where do they find out more for your campaign?
Yeah. Where do they find out more about you and the campaign?
Well, it's easy. You go to rosschun.com and you can find out more about what I'm doing, what I have done and what's coming up. Because believe it or not, there's less than two weeks, but I've got like eight events coming up.
Wow.
And, and I'm very excited about all of them.
Let's spell it for people, Russ.
Okay, so it's, uh, it's R O S S C H U N dot com.
Yeah, I, I, again, I, I really appreciate you making the time because I know how it gets as we get closer to the actual D-Day.
Yes.
Right? So, and whoever's listening, I don't care who you vote for, register, make sure your registration is valid and vote. Get engaged, get involved. Don't sit on your keister and say, nah, I'm going to sit this one out.
But don't vote for me because I will not serve.
And Paul, 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 Paul is not running. So do not write Paul Roberts in.
I will not serve.
Well, I, I don't, I don't, that's not what's motivating me to tell people not to vote for you. I need somebody to run the board. So, so we need, we still need him at OC Talk Radio.
Well, and I'll just add that, uh, I do care who you vote for. So please do vote and vote for Ross Chan.
Well, yes, I mean, and if I, I'm not in your district, so.
I know you're not.
So, but, um, I got my own district issues to deal with.
Exactly.
But, um, you know, you guys don't have sand issues. We got, we got a replenished sand on the beaches.
Watching that very carefully.
Oh, yeah. It's an interesting one to watch in San Clemente. Uh, fascinating how people have different opinion on certain things. Uh, but educate yourself, know who your candidates are, get to know the people, listen to this. You know, anybody who's in Russ's, uh, You know, district, let them know about the show. It'll, it'll be, it's, it's, it will be up on YouTube. I mean, it is up on YouTube right now. But we will also share it on social come tomorrow by tomorrow. And, uh, educate yourself. Vote, get engaged. It's one of the things that makes this country very unique. And a lot of people in other countries would love to have the right that you have. So exercise it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You got some Eagles music?
Try it.